9:10, February 13. This is a work session and our topics tonight are the Christine Grant attendance area, elementary school attendance area development discussion, and a geobond legal requirements. I want to turn it over to Adam and Amy on the Christine Grant.
All right, so we're going to walk through the presentation that was used last week during the community meeting. First, I just want to maybe publicly recognize our four building principals that are here tonight. I put the invitation out for the first board request being around for these discussions. And so you just want to introduce yourself real quick. Jeremy, I'll start with you.
Jeremy, you guys, Principal Twain, Elementary.
Nick Crowe, Principal Garner, Elementary.
Harry Kewall, Principal Van Allen, Elementary.
I need a girl and we're going to split her at elementary.
You know, these guys have been on your book. So thanks again, guys. All right, so we're going to walk through again the presentation that we did last week. Roughly around 15 community members attended, so probably was our least well-attended meeting of the four, although I wasn't at the third one, but that's the indication I'm getting from others. The first few slides that you see located in the board docs are the ones that Steve has started with at every meeting. So what are we about? We're about developing these attendance zones for the new Christine Grant Elementary School construction to begin the spring, unless that snow melts. Students moving in in the fall of 2019, capacity of around 625 students. And we just displayed them out, but the location, Happy Bridge Road there. And then again, we revisit these bullet points that we need to create this attendance area for Grant Elementary. We need to revise attendance areas for sending students to this building. The building was previously located, going to be located south of Liberty High School, though, on that Scanlon Farms development. Steve each time walks them through the process there, so talks about the prep work, the board conversations that we've had during the months of December and January, the work sessions, guidance we would have received. Then the community meetings are laid out there. We've talked about that Monday, February 19th meeting, that fifth meeting always being a tentative one if needed. We can have that discussion tonight whether we feel like that's necessary. You see the board of directors meetings listed, and I think the last piece is an important piece to point out that you've felt been very transparent and clear with the community members that are coming to the meetings about the board's desire to really take a look at all attendance areas. And so that's just really out there for them to know that even though we're doing this now, that doesn't mean that we might not be coming back at a later time. This then shows the proposed entire picture of what elementary, the school attendance areas could look like if we were to bring it to the board for 2019, 2020. We'll get into some more specific maps here.
Can you zoom in on any of these?
Yeah. So the Christine Grant Elementary draft up there, it's kind of draft two. So originally, you can see that at the very bottom, I think that area is called Penn Meadows. We had included that the first go-around with the proposal, and there was a suggestion that got brought back in one of those early meetings about possibly looking at taking the Penn Meadows kiddos out and having them stay at Penn. And so as we went through a couple iterations of this, the community feedback that we got is really centering around this idea and this map. So then if you look at Penn Elementary, yeah, that shows that top piece there with Penn Meadows and around, you can see it's bringing, it's touching on those North Wytham families as well as North Lincoln families. Again, on the right-hand side of that map is where those kiddos from Lincoln and North Wytham would have originally been feeding into that Scanlon Farms Elementary School or the old Christine Grant. So this is the proposal that we've kind of settled with now. The next map is Wytham, and this is the zone that the board would have also approved during the May 2016 year, so these zones don't change. And then Garner was the board-approved zone for the 1920 school year as well. And as we move on to the next slide, you see Van Allen, Lincoln, Kirkwood, and Corville Central, and those zones all remained the same that they were to change to come 2019, 2020, based on those board decisions in May of 2016. So largely, the maps have remained the same except for the attendance zone changes for Penn Elementary and Grant. But we did hear some feedback, knowing that we've got some families in some potentially very unique situations with multiple moves. So if you think back to that first night that we had, our first meeting, we went through, I think it was Appendix Five, where we talked about what are all those things we need to be looking at and considering, and then what are your priorities? One thing we heard loud and clear was, you know, keep the moves as limited, limit the moves for us if possible. So one thing we quickly came to after hearing from our North Lincoln families or North Wytham families was, you know, can you do something for us and what might that be? We talked about, do we do flex zones? We really came to this idea of, do we just put these kiddos, potentially the parents would want them, on a grandfathered voluntary transfer? So while they'd be zoned to the new area, go to the homeschool lookup page, and they'd be zoned to a certain attendance zone, kids beginning next year in grades K through four or K through three, whichever cohorts we decided to grab, would be able to stay through their elementary career at Lincoln or at Wytham, or in the later slide you'll see, at Van Allen. This slide really depicts the amount of moves a kiddo currently attending Lincoln might see. And we debated whether we call the move out to New Hoover during the renovation a move, but in the end, we just acquiesced and said, it's a physical move, so we're going to count those. And so when you look at those kids, we don't have that firm K number, but we just rolled up to essentially what we're seeing this year in our numbers to what that prediction would look like. So if we looked at K four, we would be offering parents of K four students next year in the North Lincoln area, approximately 80 students, the ability to stay on an extended voluntary transfer back to Lincoln. Their parents would have to transport. No siblings that are coming through after them would be grandfather-cloused or be bootstrapped along with them. It would just be for these kiddos right here. Because you can see, you know, again, we're having to do a lot of guessing, but want to try to be very transparent with the community as well, that there's a potential, we know we've got need, we know we've got growth happening in North Liberty still. If we were to build that elementary school back on that Scanlon Farms property, at what point could that potentially happen? And Steve, I've heard share out loud that if we're into a building phase, it's typically been every couple of years. So something like this, of course, is thinking through, does save get extended? Does the board want to or see the need to bring on another elementary up there? So again, just trying to be transparent on what all the possibilities are. That's what we have put in place or as an offering, and we got a lot of great positive feedback last week because of it. Same situation then as we go down and look at Wytham. Some of these families have the potential to move or be in three different buildings. And so if you look at that K four group again, next year approximately 12 kids, we're talking about a significant number less. Now, this next one isn't necessarily an apples-to-apples request with what you saw earlier. It happened to be a request, and that's what we really based kind of our thinking on or trying to figure out, could we do anything differently with families? You'll see that this request is simply from one building to another, but again, it was something that we wanted to honor and state that we would look at. So I would say the community feedback that night, we didn't necessarily have families in this situation there, and none of the feedback. So again, with these, I think there's roughly, Adam, is it 10 or 12?
It's 10, 10 K through three and 11 K through four are the numbers that should be where those question marks are.
So again, this is the zone, the small portion of Van Allen that would be zoned to go to Wytham in 1920. So we've got just numbers here of kids that would potentially be able to take this extended year guarantee. The other thing about this for our families is we also believe it satisfies the fact that a lot of them want the feeder pattern of North Central to Liberty. So if you are a North Lincoln student, are going to, sorry, if you're a North Lincoln student now going to be zoned to Penn, you want to stay at North Lincoln so you don't have those multiple moves. As you become a junior high student, the family still is technically sitting in the Penn Elementary, and if they wanted that North Central/Liberty feeder, they were getting that as well. Same with our North Wytham situation here, they're going to be technically Penn students. This next piece, I think you guys, will you have your hand up?
Okay, I don't want to interrupt. The one, on the previous, there was some comment too about if they, there was a question about if they could go, if they could withdraw that kind of grandfathering. So if the North, if the Scanlon property was built, they didn't want, if they wanted to go to that school, that was a question that they wanted.
Absolutely. Yeah, good point, Nick. And so the default is always back to the homeschool. They always have the right to attend their homeschool at any point. I hope you bring that up. This next slide then shows the elementary school data and the impact it would have back on the buildings. I think I'm going to walk you through like one situation and then allow you some time to ask questions based on this. So I'm going to use the Lincoln, the two Lincoln columns, so the white column and the green column, I'll more Lincoln right next to it. You see that there would be approximately 187 students, K seven, living in the board-approved attendance zone. If we allowed those 80 students then to stay on an extended year and t voluntary transfer, we'd be looking at potentially upwards of 80 students. So if you combine those two numbers, that's over, looks like a little bit over that capacity there, right? So we've got a couple of factors to consider. Would everybody want to take it? Does everybody end up taking it? And then what could we do unique, you know, keeping maybe that modulars at Lincoln, that kind of thing? So you have to take that green column number as well as the other number. You can also see then where the students are coming from as you go and work down that chart. Not all of our students that are in those living areas are currently attending school there as well. I said I wasn't going to jump in all around, but, so I'll talk about Wytham. Those North Wytham students, you would need to add that green 36 to the 387 that are scheduled to be at the building. And you can see that, you know, that keeps us within capacity there. Same with Van Allen, we stay within capacity. What kinds of questions might you have or have some time to kind of look through that or think through that?
Just have one concern, I guess. A little uncomfortable in a lot of the emails we got, you know, we have this flex with this potential Scanlon Farms in 2021. I feel like people believe that this school is going to be built in 2021 there when that hasn't been approved or...
Or that land, or even land, there's no development plan.
And so it makes me think back to when we had the land on the east side that we never ended up building a school and instead sent those kids to Longfellow, bust them there saying, oh, you're going to have a school eventually, you're going to have a school eventually. Eventually it was like a long time down the road and in a different location. So I mean, I just, that just worried me that we presented that way. And that's, I guess, the feeling I've gotten back. Maybe it's wrong on my end, but in the emails at least, people, I think, felt like that school is going to be built in that location in 2021.
Just, so I'm not reading everything wrong, is the K four, is it students in 2019, 20 that are K through four, or now K through?
That are the next years.
Yeah, so that's, it's actually drawing from right now, so you can assume that these numbers and the growing zones are going to go up because we have no way to account for students who will be kindergartners next year. And because these are new attendance zones, we don't have enrollment projections for them. So per se, we have a living count projections for the district, but not by these attendance zones, so it's a little bit of a challenge for us. So these numbers are likely to increase, especially in those attendance zones where we see new development. But this reflects the number of K three students who would be in that zone today. And that's how it's been noted on the handouts we provided at the community meetings as well.
Are there other questions specific to this chart that we're currently displaying? All right, so I'll just keep moving through the presentation then. From time to time, different community meetings, they've been interested in what those feeder patterns are looking like as they move under the secondary buildings. Yeah, it's been provided as well, as well as that secondary school data. And then each time after we go through the presentation, there's a chunk of table time to do work and to provide feedback. And then after each one, we look at the feedback and draw our next set of maps based on the feedback that we've got. So if you'd like, I can share. There was, again, there was roughly 13, maybe 15 people there that night, but you can read through the comments. Great proposal for the extended voluntary transfer guarantee. This will make so many North Wytham families happy. Perfect compromise. Thank you. The voluntary transfer extended guarantee is a great solution. I support the voluntary transfer extended guarantee. Great solution. I support the voluntary transfer extended guarantee proposal. Strong support for voluntary transfer extended guarantee. Posits extended voluntary transfer. Uncertainty of timing of opening Scanlon Farms schools could be two years, could be much longer. Split North Lincoln, some kids stay at Lincoln, some go to Penn, splits the neighborhood. Pros of extended voluntary transfer, gives parents flexibility, limits the number of transitions for kids who take advantage. Next comment, extended transfer is a yes. Possibility of extended transfer beyond Scanlon opening. Example, no New Hoover to Penn, Penn can choose Penn instead of Scanlon or moving to Scanlon next. There's some future talk there, thinking there. Looking at North Lincoln and North Wytham transfers first, and who wants to reduce number of moves? Example, North Lincoln to Penn 2018, 2019 instead of New Hoover. So we have some families that want to try to avoid going out to the New Hoover and knowing that they're going to be zoned to Penn, they want to be able to make that jump right away. And we have said, or I've heard Steve say at the community meetings, that we would honor voluntary transfers, of course, just like we do now based on space available. The caveat to that is our building is a more tight Garner and Penn particularly. And then Christine Grant map, there's a comment says Christine Grant has very low socioeconomic status compared to Garner and Penn, leave Penn Meadows to Grant to increase low SDS. I think when Steve reviewed that, it was about like a 1.6.
Yeah, it's like 1.5, that's one of the problems. There's a difference if you assign it one way or the other.
So with that, any other questions?
I, I mean, I've read the emails, I mean, I haven't gotten a single negative piece of feedback. It seems like this is a really good, maybe the least disruptive proposal, especially if we're planning to disrupt everything. I think if to get this right, make it nice, as clean as possible, limiting those transitions for kids, I mean, I think it's as good as we can get on this piece of, this part of the district. I'm looking for problems.
I just, again, like, I think we need to be very clear that that Scanlon Farms school is not a luxury or...
I think we should say...
I mean, because we keep presenting it as a flex.
Yeah, there's no...
The tenor of all the emails, people seem to think it's a done deal.
Yeah, I think people need to understand, there's zero plans because there's no developer that is in, right? Watt was going to develop it.
And we don't have the money.
We don't have any money for it.
Well, we don't have the money, but I just mean, the money piece could be in our control if we decided to bond or what. But the fact that that isn't being developed is, I mean, that's, I mean, that to me is not even in our control, so we don't have any way to project when that might be. Am I right on that? Like, a developer would have to come into that land, right, Rick? Probably.
Yeah. We need to probably have a closed session on that topic at our next board meeting.
Yeah, I just forgot, I forgot to mention that.
And we can illuminate that for you, and there's more things that we have that you need to know.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of areas associated.
Yeah.
When I talked, the last time we talked about this, the work session, and, you know, because someone at my table at the first meeting talked about Penn Meadows area specific, I kind of proposed moving that and swapping it with another area to not, well, to at least try and balance the change to the SES that was happening there, because I knew it was going to drop Grant fairly low, just if you just took that part away. And I talked about the little area that's west of Front Street and south of Penn, so you're basically trading whether you cross Penn or cross Front Street to get to your school. I didn't know if that was looked at at all with some of the numbers. It'd be like a little area just south of that.
Yeah, just south. Look at the current Penn.
Hold on, let me pull that up real quick for you. So the yellow area is the current Penn attendance zone, this little border is the proposed Christine Grant. So the area that you're talking about would be, would this area here?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if I draw that real quick, it's not going to take long. Have 124 students in that zone. That would include K through 12, however. So we just draw K through six. It'd be 68 students. Of those 48 are identified as free reduced lunch eligible.
Is that comparable to the Penn Meadows that...
It's actually a, so, so if we draw the Penn Meadows area here, then that is stunningly also 68 students, but 16 free and reduced lunch. So it's not a comparable area in terms of socioeconomic status, but it's exactly the same number of kids.
But it would push it into the right direction towards balance, would it not?
It would, yeah.
Adding 16 to 15.
It would be adding 60, yeah, so it'd be, so it'd be a wash from the initial proposal in terms of total number of students. But it would have the effect of bringing Grant and Penn closer in terms of socioeconomic status.
Just 5%? 2%?
Yeah, we do some math on that real quick.
I don't know.
Like I said, it's crossing Penn instead of Front, and I have heard a lot of people talk about that area is kind of sketchy. I know Front ends, you know, Manhattan Bridge Road, you're going out of town, a lot of people driving between Solon and North Liberty, so there's a lot of traffic going north and south. I don't know what it's like going east and west on Penn. I think either way, you're trading one road for the other, and you'd have to have, I think you'd have to have a crossing there, and I think there was already plans to do that.
Which will terminate it.
Yeah, looks like the total impact on...
Yeah, that's the weird crossing there since now.
Total impact on socioeconomic status, screwing the numbers in my head, it would be about a 4% bump in the end at Christine Grant.
Okay.
And then at Penn, it would be a very similar decline.
Drop.
Actually.
And then what's the traffic down the hall? Was that what Sean's talking about? I mean, that's a little more, that's a pretty, I mean, that's bringing Grant up to 13, 14% and Penn down to 15. I mean, that kind of makes them almost the same.
What about the fact I'm a resident in that area and I don't travel there in the morning times, it's way out of my way. What about the traffic on Penn Street slash North Liberty Road because there's going to be students going to the high school that way? Yeah, it's different times, obviously, but if you're sending the kids from this square that you have now down to Penn.
I know that that was one of Steve's concerns with switching Penn Meadows from the initial proposal, because there are fewer stop signs if you follow North Liberty Road around as opposed to coming down any other way. So there's traffic and probably increasing traffic in that area. You can probably speak to that more effectively.
I would say either of those roads are pretty busy for North Liberty, and those are two of probably the most busy roads that exist. I think the community comment from this current square here was currently they cross one road and then they walk on a path through a park to get to the school, and that was why they, there was some comment there. I think Sean, that was who you heard at your table. You know, we obviously haven't thrown the other one up, and all of these, we haven't thrown that as an option from them. I'd be curious to see what that response would be, but if you were to flip-flop those, but either way, you're going to have to cross, somebody's crossing a relatively busy road, you know, for the town. It's just a two-lane road, there's a lot of traffic, it's just the density of the population and a lot of people moving at that time of day.
There is, there's always frustration that emerges when you set a boundary where students are in an attendance zone for a school and they're almost across the street from another school. We'd potentially be getting into that scenario with students who are living right over in this area for whom Penn is almost within sight.
Well, probably depending on how you draw it, Adam, just with the, there's a, a lot of the density and the population exists because there's some apartment buildings there, like, so even if you drew it...
Also, this is commercial.
Yeah. So if you, depending how you drew it, that could make a big difference, too. Like if you came down Stewart versus and kind of made that rectangle, you know, depending how you did it, that might make a difference, too.
Sure. And if we draw that area...
Because the bottom of this can currently see Garner and they go to Penn.
Exactly, yeah. And then we're going to run into that area with schools so closely located regardless.
Yeah.
So looking at this area, each dot represents a student, more or less, or at least a household. So we do actually have, looks like I drew it a little differently, it must have caught someone I missed before because our number just went to 73, but, but each of these, so, you know, there's some distribution. It would probably be hard to subdivide that, I think, is where...
I don't know. Cut it in half there, Cherry, I mean, it's not, I mean, it's not the biggest road, but it is highly trafficked, too, so you're having potentially those kids cross that or they're going over to Front Locking up, so.
Yeah, that'd be hard.
Between Cherry and Penn, that might be enough to...
Make Cherry the southern boundaries ever since, Sean?
Yeah. I was just trying to make sure that, you know, you brought it up, JP, I mean, we are trying to do a better job to balance, and you know, that's why most of you guys are here tonight, to look at the, on the next step. And it seems to me to start with sub, you know, and we're in single digits to start with, I think, and there's maybe a fairly easy change that we could address that. I think we should at least look at it.
Yeah, I agree.
So there's Cherry. Yeah, so at the line of Cherry, that number drops from the 71, which was the total, to 44. The number of free reduced actually stays fairly close. I think it was at 48 initially, now it's at 37, so.
Just because of the house, that's, yeah, more like a housing there.
So we can start with, work on putting together the numbers.
I mean, yeah, that seems like an easy switch for, for a nice, quite a gain in percentages.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to go back for that fifth community employee.
I do, too.
Those Penn Meadows families are now, again, a couple times in a row, they've been thinking about going back down to Penn, so.
I mean, that's why...
Well, that lead Penn Meadows going to Penn.
Penn Meadows would stay in this scenario, and this would go up to Grant.
Add the 44 up.
Correct. Which would get us pretty close again to that initial proposal number for Grant.
Equity fifth meeting?
On the one, so on the one hand, we could do this now. On the other hand, if this is all going to be redone anyway, do we spend a lot of time on this now? Because when we decide to do things like that, those aren't, these aren't going to be friendly meetings with nice emails, because, you know, we're going to be doing things based on, I mean, this is all based on the input that we got, that's like, we want to go here, with not a lot of dissension, but at some point, there's going to be people just, they're, you know, we're going to hear that, well, yeah, equity is great, except when you live right next to the school, or yeah, equity is great, but I don't want, you know, we can't do this gerrymandered line along this thing. You know, we're going to run into, we're going to monkey with these a lot more later, you know, so I don't know if we stay with this relatively safe, popular proposal from the groups there, or if we make like one small change here, are we going to go back later and make bigger changes? I mean, North Liberty doesn't give us a lot of room to maneuver. I mean, North Liberty doesn't give us a lot of room to maneuver. So, so I don't know. I don't know if, you know, I don't know if it's worth a fifth meeting if months from now, we're going to redo everything. And I don't know.
I think you have to have a meeting because it's like the school, we can't guarantee that months from now, we're going to do anything.
Well, yeah, true.
I think having a fifth meeting would hurt any of what we're planning months from now.
And it's this, it's this change that would be discussed there.
You can do that?
When's, when's that, we had, did we have it scheduled?
February 19th.
19th.
That's Monday. Monday.
And I guess if this time's seven, can you show up? We'll know that one.
Yeah, that's the state of that stuff.
Okay, next topic. Do you want to take this one, Lori? Am I punting?
Oh goodness. Yeah, so, I guess the question is, how do we want to attack this topic? I think I'd like to hear from the principals. I know we're really down to not much time, but you all have been sitting here so patiently. I want to hear what you have to say. And then I think the board needs to decide at some point, what kind of, what kind of structure are we going to put around this decision process? Or, like, I was thinking maybe we could even have like a master plan, sort of, kind of like we have a facilities master plan. We could have like a master plan for this so that we look at things well and we don't try and do everything at once. But we have a plan for how we're going to, because, I mean, you know, lots of good ideas here. What will work in different areas? That's what I'd like to hear. So, maybe should we just start with hearing from the principals? You want to go first?
I feel like I said everything. I don't know, do I just say everything again?
What do you think makes sense for Kirkwood area?
I think the only thing to do is to, to force, I'm just going to say, desegregation. I feel like we are a segregated school system and I, I think the only way to change that is to force it. I would love to believe that people will change from their home school to another school if they were offered something interesting or different. But I don't believe it. We've gone through this process multiple times and people, it, somebody, somebody said, it's fine as long as it's not me. You know? So, I think the only way to do it is to either sister school us or make, you know, somebody mentioned the other day, a pre-K, K center, a 1, 2, 3 center, a 4, 5, 6 center. I mean, there are multiple different ways to do that where you could start getting that FRL number more comparable. Sitting here talking about single-digit FRL schools just kind of makes me sad, I guess. Don't like that.
So, it sounds like for Kirkwood, your thoughts are potentially sister school concept? And then or, and/or just changing boundaries. And Corville is complicated. I mean, not any more complicated than anywhere else, but, you know, I mean, we've got some busing from north of Kirkwood that comes down, south of Kirkwood. And we've got kids that live within walking distance of Wickham. And so, you know, it would just be reshuffling that.
And I think we're a little bit complicated with the fact that we go to North Central and Liberty. And then the two closer ones would go to Northwest and West with being, you know, at one point, we had talked about sister schooling with Wickham. And numbers-wise, that makes a lot of sense. I also wonder, noticing how fast you can change them, what would it do to, if everybody, what would it do if everybody came back to Kirkwood that is in the Kirkwood area? And you took the Boston Way group and went one direction or another with them, either to Borlaug or to Wickham? Have you already done that?
I haven't. We could put together numbers on that.
I guess what, so, you know, I think, I think, I mean, I guess I'd like to see us try a few different things, maybe for different reasons other than equity. I think a place like Hills is frankly ripe for some sort of a really cool ag magnet. I really do, that people might really go to and choose something different. I think some, right, just as a, not that that's going to change a lot of numbers, but just as something we can try curricularly that might be good and something that we don't currently have, right? So, I have some of those ideas like that. Also, I think even before, I think then, at the end of the day, I've looked at this too. We got to draw some funny lines or some different things. Because if there, you're, I agree, I don't think people are going to, the incentive isn't going to be strong enough. If everybody loves their school, the incentive isn't strong enough to go find programming somewhere else to drive across town for, unless, I mean, maybe something like year-round school because that might be very particular to certain families and be very, very appealing and worth a long commute. But I do, I think, and because it is that easy, you know, I guess I'd like to see a first stab at, you know, okay, what does every school within this parameter, what's it look like? And maybe that, and I know maybe you have to go in and draw, but if you could spit that out and we could see the goofy jigsaw puzzle that is, and then make some shifts knowing what we all know about our community and traffic patterns and geographic barriers, then what does that look like? Because I don't think we're going to have the real conversation with the community until we show them something that shakes it up. And the truth is, we do live in a segregated community and it's not, I mean, this is what we've been handed as a school district. And we know it hurts some of our kids way more than others. It hurts the kids who are in low FRL schools because they're not getting a real-world experience. They're not getting diverse exposure and that harms them. And it harms the kids in the higher FRL schools because we know that's a different educational offering. It's just behaviors are different, there's just more to deal with. We absolutely know the RAM model is not financially sustainable. And we're going to see that in the next few years when we get down to that unspent balance, that we're going to be, we're going to be looking for savings. And I would rather be mindful about these decisions. Once we do that sort of funny jigsaw puzzle, then I think a piece of evening that out might be paired schools because it might look different. You know, the reason Kirkwood's going to Liberty and Alexander's going to West is because we have to balance out those numbers. But if we balance it out at the elementary level, that could look very, very different. And it might not make sense to do that because it, you know, because the numbers at the elementary, the feeder system changes what it looks like at all of our high schools. So, and I think until we start seeing that, it's going to be hard to, you know, I mean, I'd like to do some of these other things just because I think it's, it could be good educationally. But I think if we're talking about balancing equity, I too am pretty skeptical that enough people are going to move because we have a foreign language immersion program. And then the data kind of supports that, that not too many people are going to shift based on those magnet ideas that we put out. So, that's kind of where I'm at.
So, just in thinking of time and wanting to hear from everybody, where did Jeremy go? Jeremy?
Yeah.
I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Sure. When I think about the level of change, you know, you have the higher order of change and kind of low hanging fruit. So, the higher order of change, when we talk about sister schools, I think that, yeah, when we talk about Twain that has 80% free reduced lunch percentages, that is really hard to see 9%. It is, it's completely different educational experience. So, that's higher order change. And I know that's a lot of, a lot of the discussions have been focused on that. But when I think about our transient population and how mobile our population is at Twain, it's really hard to measure the effectiveness of our instruction when you have a class of 20 and 10 of them from August and it's May. And so, I think I'd like to look at options to talk about how to kind of decrease that mobility in that transient population even for next year if we could, kind of as a low hanging fruit for Twain's population. And I'm really excited to play with this map. It looks like a really fun toy.
I'm excited.
I've never even known if you just draw the boxes around and see how many. So, that, those are just some things I'm thinking about. I think that there is some like low hanging fruit that is very possible for next year. I know a lot of the conversation is focused on 2019, 20 with Liberty, but Twain is at capacity. We increased two classroom sections this past year and a special live teacher section. We are, we are full and then we have a lot of kids that are in, out, and out. At registered two kids today.
And that's because the shelter is zoned there, right? And so, that's
Free.
Three shelters are zoned and, and, yeah.
So, that would require
Changing.
Potentially making, if you're talking about a change for next year, that would need to be focused on, like, really focused on now. That would probably need to take all of our attention in terms of this boundary discussion. And maybe that's a place to start. You know, I don't know. Maybe that's, I don't, I don't have the answers here, but.
I think if you start monkeying around with the maps though, and you divide those shelters out, I mean, that, obviously, the easy answer there is, and again, I hadn't looked at the map, but what's it like to separate them to different schools? We can't redraw the boundary.
Well, you've got, yeah, you've got McKinney-Vento. You're up against McKinney-Vento. And it's, we had them separated and they made us put them back together.
But you separated them when they were in the attendance area. But if we change the attendance area, and that's what we're talking about, is changing attendance areas, I mean, in the big, and I know, and I guarantee you, it's going to, people are going to say, oh, gerrymandering. But this is different than gerrymandering to make sure your party wins. This is gerrymandering to make sure we have an equitable education in a town, a city that's been built, that makes it very, very difficult to do this any other way. Especially because of legislation like that, that what are you supposed to do?
I do think it should be something that we look at as a priority because one of the options is Longfellow and they're coming back as a school online next year. It's possible to exercise.
So, one thing, I brought up this map board just so that everybody can really visualize this a little bit. This is just K6 students, but the pattern would be the same K12. It's easy to miss, you know, just driving through the community, how clustered our student population is. If you look at this map, there are vast expanses within the district that have zero students. The entire area around the University of Iowa has no students. Yet, we look out here around Weber and there's this dense cluster, you know, almost the entire district is composed of dense clusters of people. I am, I love, I like drawing maps and I'm happy to do so if directed with whatever parameters are in mind. But I really put this up here just to the extent that I wanted, wanted all of you to be able to see, you know, some of the challenges that come with trying to subdivide areas with the potential priority. And of course, it's, it's your prerogative to set that, but the potential priority of keeping neighborhoods together. You know, the neighborhoods by and large are defining our attendance zones as we sit right now. So, I just wanted to get this out so you can kind of visualize that, but, you know, I'm happy to work on this.
I think there's no way we do this without subdividing neighborhoods. And the truth is, then we create new neighborhoods. And, you know, you're, you're in the neighborhood that you go to school in. And I, I mean, and because we looked at this before, every time you look at, there's no way you do this without re-creating what a neighborhood is. But that's also, at the heart of segregation is neighborhoods, right? Like deliberately set up that way through our history by banks saying, certain people don't get to buy homes over here. And that's what we're left with. And municipalities can't do very much about that. You can't tell people what they can and can't. You can tell what they can't build, but it's pretty hard to tell them what they can build. And you really can't tell who's going to live there. I think we're one of the governmental bodies that has the least, our hands are tied the least as far as we get to decide what the boundaries are. And I know that will be very unpopular.
Doesn't sister schools mitigate that to a surgery? Because you, you can cast a wider net and so instead of this neighborhood, it's both of these neighborhoods.
You get, you know, you're going to bump up probably transportation costs because you're, you know, a little bit. I mean, from that report that I read about sister paired schools, you might gain some efficiencies. And I think we'd have to look at those numbers because I think you gain operational efficiency.
Depending on how crazy you get gerrymandering too, right? You're going to increase transportation costs there as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is it our turn or?
Go for it.
You want to go?
Yeah, go for it.
I throw in a few different things, just to think about from like North Liberty and different things. I think one thing, to be mindful, you just talked about redrawing is we don't want to also create barriers that would then become a problem of, you know, kids getting to different things and creating these long distances. That's going to be then, like, in the effort to balance then to create a barrier that they're so far away. I look at some of our families, our most challenging ones, I can see, you know, the neighborhood to which they live in. And sometimes it's still difficult to get them in for a meeting or going and picking them up even though it's, you know, through, you know, down a walking trail away. So, I think that's something just to be in consideration as you're thinking about some of those as well. I think too, I put on the document that Damian asked us when they're, I think, looking at different things for creative solutions that also can create efficiencies. We talked a lot about some of the changes and differences within this, but size is a variable as well. And at Garner, we're 670 kids, okay? We have 18, 19% free reduced, which, well, that doesn't sound that much. But that also then calculates out to about 140-something families or 140-something kids, which is a huge, it's a significant number of need as well. But it doesn't look the same because it's just our total population. So, and that changes a little bit in this map. I think it goes up to about 25% or somewhere around there just because the neighborhood that's leaving doesn't necessarily have many families in it. So, that's just, I mean, so it's not like there isn't the need in some of these others, it's just, it presents itself differently. So, that size piece can play into that too when you look at some of those percentages and some of those things. I'm not saying it's an equitable scenario to, you know, my colleagues here who are building to, you know, that much within, you know, that range within their building. But it's not that the need isn't also present. And I think sometimes that gets, that gets lost in some of these dialogues as well. So, I just keep thinking about, you know, opportunities to use sister schools, opportunities to look at some grade level experiences. You know, Lori and I were actually talking to your attendance the other day, even looking at opportunities within expansion of preschool. That's one of the things I think is continuing to be a giant barrier for the families that I work with. If I look through the, our kindergarten ranks, I mean, that is an enormous barrier. The power proficiency within our building is a huge difference whether, you know, you're coming to reading, you're coming in, I don't know a letter. You know, because our current preschool model ultimately doesn't, I mean, it's convenient for stay-at-home moms, but not necessarily convenient for the families that we really want to reach out to. So, I think there's other solutions that we can look at, looking at different things within the attendance centers, looking at how we can couple schools, looking at how we do things and probably even hopefully, you know, maybe make Craig happy over there if we're working on some of those efficiency things where we can, we can maximize staff a little bit better. Because we have huge variances within that. If you look, I mean, I'm sure you guys look at some of those things. We have classrooms in excess of 30 kids, multiple in our building. So, and then there could be a similar grade level where, you know, it's half of that depending on where it's at, just because of how, how the numbers fall. And that's not, you have to have that teacher there, you can't not teach this. So, I think there's a lot of things that we can be smart with that. Not necessarily where the lines as much as it's lines in combination of being creative.
Yeah, I'm with you. I think, I mean, I think we're going to have to be very creative and, and it's not going to be one-size-fits-all around it.
And I think as you look at like our situation up here, I think the closer we can get initially, because there isn't as many solutions. Unless you're going to send kids on a huge bus ride to North Liberty or vice versa, there, you're really limiting. You don't have the same number of options. you don't have the same number of options as you may in a cluster that there is the, you know, as I mean, just talking where there's differences right nearby. So, I think if you're thinking to that current discussion, the closer that can be in the get-go, the prider the better off you are. You know, I know you can, said, ah, maybe it's not that important, but it probably is, cause I don't know what other, you might have limited solutions because our schools are so similar, both in size, both in general demographics, both in, you know, neighborhood makeups and stuff. So, and we're all gonna end up being in that five to six hundred range and continue to add more kids because houses keep going out. So, just some thoughts.
I don't really have a whole lot to add. I mean.
Sorry, it took a long time.
No, I mean, Nick and I schools, our schools are fairly similar as are most of the schools in North Liberty, which are very different from some of the other schools in the district. I mean, the students that we serve, the size of our buildings and how many students that we can serve, I think that, you know, whatever route is taken, I mean, there's gonna make some people happy and some people really, really unhappy. And, I mean, that's, you know, that's just kinda gonna be the outcome and it's gonna benefit some and cause it amongst others. So, I don't know that there's a easy way or a right way. It's really a lot of complications, whatever path you take. Certainly no easy way.
I just wanna do a quick check-in. We normally do a hard stop at ten, we have not heard from Ann yet. Would we like to keep going for a little longer or should we stop?
Amy did ask me to clarify one thing. In some of our class sizes that are increased, we do share. It's one stab in the balance between three different grade levels. So, there are times when there's thirty in the room, but also there's other times where there's not, cause it's shared between. So, that's why when you get your reports, it looks a little bit different, cause we share, there's one rule to share between third, fourth and fifth grade, but all those class sizes at other times, the rosters are listed as somewhere between twenty-nine to thirty-two. So, just so you have that as a point of clarification.
Let's wrap.
Board members, let's, let's hear from Ann.
Just real quickly, I think I would be very supportive of sister schools and one of the things is sister schools doesn't have to mean just two schools, you could do three. Like for example, Man, Lincoln and Schimmick would be a great threesome to pair together. And then Lincoln and Corvo Central, I mean, I think we talked about that at one time, I can't really remember, but, you know, just kind of rethinking in the grouping of that. But you could do some interesting things. In a small school, sometimes you have those where you have one and a half teachers to support, you know, too many kids and you don't have enough classrooms for that extra second section. But you also, you could think about, you don't have singles then, single teachers, like single grade levels. So you could maximize the amount of staffing that you have and you could do some creative things like departmentalization, you know, in elementary, like, you know, science, math and language arts or things like that too. I mean, there's a lot of creative things you could do that make it very attractive to families and children and, you know, improve our service.
One hesitation I have with sister school idea, especially when you start expanding to more than two, is that that, I think, may create another barrier for people to be involved in their school. If not, you have multiple kids. And saying there's one at three schools.
Right.
To make it to a, I don't know, you know, whatever it is.
Concert or.
Concert.
Whatever.
Conference is what I was looking for, you know, a student conference. Now you gotta go to three schools as opposed to one. If you're not ready to get the person to go to one, to get them to go to two or three may be even harder or just, I mean, there's, there's other things I would be very cautious of doing that idea without a very, very strong community buy-in.
It would also disrupt current PTO activities, you know, it changed that, it would change some of the traditions that happen at the schools. I mean, you'd have to really rethink. It would take a lot of planning, but anything that you're talking about doing is going to take a lot of planning, careful planning and discussion.
Lori, can you mind if I share very quick? I've asked all twenty principals, you know, pros to sister schools, cons to sister schools, other ideas that they might have. And I probably don't have everybody represented, but here's some of the pros that were listed. Allowing for balancing demographics, help PD when more teachers are sitting at the grade level, more focused, concentrated with fewer age ranges to be working with, flexibility in scheduling eliminates the single sections that Ann already referred to. Cons, busing costs, families in multiple attendance centers, ability to transport far their expense to repurpose buildings, particularly maybe if you're talking about our buildings that are, you know, have two levels, how could we really utilize that? Would have to be in an upper elementary building, considering who we can put upstairs, relationships with families, number of transitions, those were the cons. And then other ideas, should we be considering early childhood centers, a K five, six, eight configuration, pilots for the sister school idea, those that are already balanced, stay where they're at, programming magnet schools, work with municipalities to diversify housing. And then magnet school is an idea that Ann brought to our attention, just with a family that she had recent conversations with, like really promote your building as we've got certain programs there. And a little bit different than magnet schools, not your typical magnet school topic areas, but maybe something like some special reading intervention or some special thing that we're doing that's above and beyond what maybe they would get in a different building. So, just wanna make sure I shared that since Amy took the time to give it to you.
So I guess the question is how we wanna move forward on this and I'm not sure we can answer that right now.
I think a work session where we come up with a process and, and I think what we're gonna have to do is some piloting anyway, probably, you know. And if we did sister schools, it's not like we would convert the whole district. That wouldn't make any sense, right? But maybe come up with some area, I don't know, tell me if this, how feasible this is. To find some areas where we could do some boundary drawing like we did here, where we might get some impact, especially if our highest need. Start, just, just start with our highest need schools and how we get them down, the highest FRL schools. And are there some things we can do boundary-wise that could, might be fairly easy? And take aside making people mad, just, just logistically, is it possible to do it? And then where are, where could pairings work the best? I mean, maybe those are the two things that I think feel like they could be, I mean, magnets, that's such a big conversation and involves so many different, what's it look like, do people really want it? But I think boundaries and pairing might be where we could find some, can we find some movement that is, or what's it look like? Does that? And maybe have another meeting to discuss what that process looks like before we send you guys off.
I would like to hear from teachers, like their thoughts on sister schools too, not just, you know, admin guys. I, I do think that there's some weight behind working board and district and school administrators, like together behind this vision of how to really correct some things, like as, you know, not just coming from on high or off to the side, you know, somebody's throwing outside. It's a concerted effort amongst us all to try and meet some needs. And I think that does have some weight, but I think, I mean, you know, I think parents respond to building administrators, but they respond to their kids' teachers too, right? And if everybody can kind of be focused in, I'd say one direction, but you're right, it'd be multiple directions probably, but to the same end, I think, I think you would get better buy-in from parents. You were absolutely right that, I mean, we just talked about needing to have flex things for reducing transitions, right, as a, as a thing. So, there is going to be concern over transitions and, you know, parent participation at schools and stuff, start doing these things. But I think if parents realize that it's, everybody's kinda in it together to improve student learning, which is kind of the whole point, it might grow some legs a little bit.
So, we need to sometimes spend some time on this when it's not nine forty-five and, or ten-ten at the moment. So, maybe Janet and I and Steve could put our heads together. Janet, I'm so sorry. And, and we could think about when we could schedule so that we don't end up having this be, this discussion we're having at this time.
Yeah.
We really need some dedicated time.
Yeah, and to come with some, I mean, kind of some ideas around process things, things that we can come back with some examples to your point. That means we have some ideas to react to. I mean, so, this has been helpful these last two sessions to kind of get some ideas, inputs from principals and your ideas, concerns, vision. We know the constraints that we have, you know, the clusters, but we also know the goals that we have and what we're trying to accomplish. So I think, if we can spend some time trying to think what some concrete next steps that we could take and what that process might look like to start incrementally moving us forward, this idea to the roadmap, this longer-term plan, we're not gonna get all this done for next school year. What's this, you know, how can we chunk this out over a few years probably? And it's like that bigger plan, I think we need to spend some time looking at what that looks like and how we'll organize ourselves to start moving through this. Right now, it feels like we're boiling the ocean and I mean, we gotta break it down into stuff that we can actually operate on and, you know.
So why don't we work on scheduling a time where it's not the last thing on the agenda?
Yeah.
So that we can actually have this discussion.
And present some ideas for how we might process our way through this. Yeah.
Does that work for everyone?
What's the next step for Grant and then if we're going to take any steps on any other schools?
Grant, we have a next meeting next Monday and then if that, I guess, we wanted to vote on this on the twenty-seventh. Typically would have a work session before we would actually go to a vote.
I guess I'm comfortable getting feedback. I don't know. I mean, if I get, if they say the meeting and they, they were fine with that, I think we could vote.
Okay. I mean, it could be a present, it could be an action on the board meeting of their, and that we discuss and that we're comfortable that there's not, I mean, we could still go that way. There's a bunch of differing opinions, then maybe we need to take it offline for a work session.
The other half is, what's the process for some of, I believe you use low hanging fruit, some stuff that we can't figure out for.
I think that's what Lori, Steve and I are gonna sit down and try to come up with, what's a proposal for how to knock some of those things out. I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm done tonight, you guys. I'm just being honest. I don't have any great action item on that.
I'm just hearing what you're talking about, what's gonna happen next school year. I think we probably should be acting on those.
Yeah. So I.
I think Amy had said that, didn't she say, I mean, I don't know if this is even possible, but April maybe? I think Steve said, or Steve said, we think there's a lot of work involved.
April for, sorry.
Just wanna be able to make sure we're communicating with our families, right? So.
April for what? I'm sorry.
If we're talking next year for our families, we need to be getting communication now from, for low hanging fruit.
For any changes for next year.
If that's even feasible. I mean, maybe we'll just say, rule that out and that it's not gonna be feasible. But this is a conversation we can have at another time. So, let's leave it at that, that we will talk about another conversation when we have more time dedicated to just that, come up with a process and.
The, the meeting is Monday at Liberty, what's it, is it six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
And I move that we adjourn.
But we missed one item on the legal requirements around the geo-bond. Is that something we can postpone, Craig?
Yeah, I love that.
Is it time?
Yeah, what's with the time constraint? That's what we're documenting, just wanna talk about time.
No, it's just purely informational.
Yeah.
I sent, I sent you all on email. I don't have anything more to add to that.
Okay.
It's entirely up to you if you have questions. That's really all we put it on the board.
And if you do, you could ask them.
You can.
Okay. All right.
I move that we adjourn.
Wait a second.